Welcome, everybody. Thank you again. As our ongoing series of officer introductions, I don't think this man here needs an introduction to most people, but maybe some of the audience are not familiar with Lieutenant Buddy Zill. But he's not one to shy away from microphones. I'm gonna let him talk about himself in just a minute, about his history here at WPD and what he would like to continue to do. But I did just want to point out a few things about him. He heads up our Explorer Post, which I would say probably compares to none, at least that I'm familiar with, but it is super successful. There was a story on Channel 6, 36, a couple of months ago about how successful it's been over the years. Those young men and women, they don't meet once a month. They meet every week, and they're here, and they're at Autumn Treasures and all these other things. They are just super active and a great bunch of kids, and a lot of that is due to Lieutenant Zill and the leadership he provides with them. And then additionally, I place Lieutenant Zill in charge of our Neighborhood Leasing Initiative, and he's gonna talk about that for just a minute or so.
Outstanding. Welcome, Lieutenant.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Commissioner, Town Manager. My name is Burton Zill. All my friends call me Buddy. This year, I have the distinct privilege of celebrating my 30th wedding anniversary. I have two daughters, and one grandson and one granddaughter. From 2001 to 2003, I was patrol officer here. In 2003, I made the rank of Sergeant. I also won the Medal Award two years in a row for my DWI IRS. I was promoted to the rank of Lieutenant in 2006. And 2014, I was appointed to be the administrative lieutenant, like Lieutenant Mulligan does. 2015, I joined the North Carolina Crime Prevention and Community Policing Association. Ever since 2016, I've served on the board, similar to you. And 2020, Lieutenant Mulligan and I started the cross training. So he took over my position, and I went down to patrol, back as a patrol lieutenant, which I enjoy immensely. I have obtained numerous certificates throughout my career. A few are the North Carolina Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate, General Instructor Certificate, which I also teach that class at SBCC, the Police Law Institute. I'm a certified background investigator. I have attended the Law Enforcement Executive Program and the County and Municipal Management Administrative Course through the Council of Government. As the chief mentioned, I've been over the Explorer Posts. We started in 2004 with four children. And in 2006, I became the post chairman. Now, we have roughly 20 kids. At one point, we had 40. That's why we had to have a school plus in the back. I couldn't transport them everywhere. I've really enjoyed the opportunity to mentor the town's youth throughout my career. On a personal note, both of my daughters, both of them got in the post when they were right at 12 years old. They went through the entire system. My one daughter, my oldest, became a sergeant. My youngest was the first female lieutenant. And they both went into the United States Army, so I'm very proud of both of them. And surprisingly to me, this past Friday, we had our annual banquet. We haven't had a Wiscott banquet since 2019 because of COVID. I was honored as the 2019 Advisor of the Year, and my partner, my citizen advisor, Bill Joseph, was the 2022 Advisor of the Year. So I was very happy with that. I also was recognized for over 15 years of service, so I got a nice little tie tag and a bit of uniform. For the last 22 years, one thing has stayed constant throughout my career, and that is my passion to serve this town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lieutenant, and congratulations for all your achievements.
Thanks, sir. Now, I'd like to take just a moment and introduce you to the Neighborhood Policing Partnership Initiative. The Waxaw Police Department is actively involved in the quality of life in the community. Problem solving is the backbone of this department's approach to policing and prevent the next crime and increase community safety. We have the contacts and the resources that will help build and protect our community. The Neighborhood Policing Partnership will provide orientation to customer service at all levels. This program will encourage officers to participate with communities involving the initiatives that promote partnerships and shared responsibilities. This program has officers assigned to designated neighborhoods to incorporate a personal contact for citizens to engage for their homeowner association meetings, national night out, open houses, neighborhood block. I go to Lowe's almost every day. In the morning, especially at school dismissal, you cannot get out of Lowe's Walmart parking lot. You cannot. So what do people do? They jump on a Providence Road, make the first left, and what happens? The people in Puritan are affected. It all starts with zoning. The developers will build as much as you allow them. They'll put, if you have 100 acres and you have 6,000 square foot lots, they'll build 400 homes. Jam them in there. You have to start with zoning. It should have been done years ago because there's stuff on the books right now that will continue because you can't say no to them. But the zoning has to change. Go to one acre, three acre minimum lots. Make them build big homes. Maybe they're not, they're gonna squawk. But until Raleigh fixes these roads, Providence Road has been a can, kick down a road for years, and I'm only here two years. I hear from people that have been 20 years, oh, they've been expanding, up in Waverly, it's expanding, at least you can get through there. It chokes when you get to Marvin and Waxaw, and it's a nightmare. And people do, as a police officer 26 years, people do crazy things when they can't get out of their own road in the morning. They will cut people off, they will make U-turns inadvertently. That's just human nature. I, I'm gonna be here for a long time, my grandchildren grow up. I beg you, please consider zoning changes. If the developers and builders squawk, let them squawk. Let them squawk to Raleigh to get these roads improved, and maybe it can be commensurate. But the current level of development in both Union County's donut holes and Waxaw proper and Marvin is just unsustainable. Unsustainable. And it's not fair. We look to you as our advocates. We have no say in it. We just have to take it. We look to you as our advocates to get something done. We, we, we voted you in to do something. I just, I just hope you just don't poo-poo me down the road. These are serious concerns. If you ask 100 people in Waxaw tonight, 99 will say, the developers rule the show and the developers run the boat and people don't care about traffic. It's a nightmare here. It's only gonna get worse. And only you guys can do something, getting together with the neighboring communities and the county to stop it.
Okay. We're out of time unfortunately. Went a little over four, but thank you. Appreciate the comments. And I appreciate you coming here tonight. So thank you. All right, we'll move down to the consent agenda since we didn't have any requested changes on the agenda for tonight. I'm looking for a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda. Who's the motion maker? Very good. Motion's up. All in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, we're good. All right, recognitions. Chief Collins, you're up once again. It's good to see you again here.
A little different path to get up here than we've had lately, so. Welcome, everybody. Thank you again. As our ongoing series of officer introductions, I don't think this man here needs an introduction to most people, but maybe some of the audience are not familiar with Lieutenant Buddy Zill. But he's not one to shy away from microphones. I'm gonna let him talk about himself in just a minute. Not his history here at WPD and what he would like to continue to do, but I did just want to point out a few things about him. He heads up our explorer post, which I would say probably compares to none, at least that I'm familiar with, but it is super successful. There was a story on Channel 6, I think, 36, a couple of months ago about how successful it's been over the years. Those young men and women, they don't meet once a month. They, they meet every week and they're here and they're, they're at Autumn Treasures and all these other things. They are just super active and a great bunch of kids, and a lot of that is due to Lieutenant Zill and the leadership he provides with them. And then additionally, I place Lieutenant Zill in charge of our neighborhood leasing initiative, and he's gonna talk about that for just a minute as well.
Outstanding. Welcome, Lieutenant.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Commissioners, Town Manager. My name's Burton Zill. All my friends call me Buddy. This year I have the distinct privilege of celebrating my 30th wedding anniversary. I have two daughters and one grandson and one granddaughter. From 2001 to 2003, I was patrol officer here. In 2003, I made the rank of sergeant. I also won the medal award two years in a row for my DWI IRS. I was promoted to the rank of lieutenant in 2006. And 2014, I was appointed to be the administrative lieutenant, like Lieutenant Mulligan does. 2015, I joined the North Carolina Crime Prevention and Community Policing Association. Ever since 2016, I've served on the board, similar to you. And 2020, Lieutenant Mulligan, Mulligan and I started the cross training. So he took over my position and I went down to patrol, back as patrol lieutenant, which I enjoy immensely. I have obtained numerous certificates throughout my career. A few are the North Carolina Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate, General Instructor Certificate, which I also teach that class at SBCC, the Police Law Institute. I'm a certified background investigator. Long, I have attended the Law Enforcement Executive Program and the county municipal management administrative course through the Council of Government. As the chief mentioned, I've been over the explorer posts. We started in 2004 with four children. And 2006, I became the post chairman. Now we have roughly 20 kids. At one point, we had 40. That's why we had to have a school plus in the back. I couldn't transport them everywhere. I've really enjoyed the opportunity to mentor the towns youth throughout my career. On a personal note, both of my daughters, both of them got in the post when they were right at 12 years old. They went through the entire system. My one daughter, my oldest, became a sergeant. My youngest was the first female lieutenant. And they both went to United States Army, so I was very proud of both of them. And surprisingly to me, this past Friday, we had our annual banquet. We haven't had a Wiscott banquet since 2019 because of COVID. I was honored as the 2019 Advisor of the Year, and my partner, my citizen advisor, Bill Joseph, was the 2022 Advisor of the Year. So I was very happy with that. I also was recognized for over 15 years of service, so I got a nice little tie tack and a bit for the uniform. For the last 22 years, one thing has stayed constant throughout my career, and that is my passion to serve this town. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Lieutenant, and congratulations for all your achievements.
Now, I'd like to take just a moment and introduce you to the Neighborhood Policing Partnership Initiative. The Waxaw Police Department is actively involved in the quality of life in the community. Problem solving is the backbone of this department's approach to policing and prevent the next crime and increase community safety. We have the contacts and the resources that will help build and protect our community. The Neighborhood Policing Partnership will provide orientation to customer service at all levels. This program will encourage officers to participate with communities involving the initiatives that promote partnerships and shared responsibilities. This program has offered, excuse me, has officers assigned to designated neighborhoods to incorporate a personal contact for citizens to engage for their homeowner association meetings, national night out, open houses, neighborhood watch programs, and patrol checks. Beyond enforcement, the officers have the power to change the situation or correct a problem by developing a plan with the citizens and the community. They can offer assistance and resources to solve any particular problem that is in that park or that neighborhood or that community. Officers will implement methodologies to solicit and evaluate and act upon the feedback from citizens to better measure the effectiveness of service and community participation. Processes are in place to precipitate the flow of information with citizens in the community by this agency. A good example is this past Friday, we had a call of a young lady that lives in Harrison Park, and she just bought a home security system. She had no idea how to install the cameras and which ways they should point. So Officer Gay, who's assigned that zone, met with her and myself, and we walked around her house and we showed her the proper placement for her cameras to show the most viewing area, so that now it covers her front door, her car, garage, instead of just the front door entry. By doing things like this, it also promotes neighborhood safety. She just so happened to live right on the corner, so when you look down the side of her house, you're also looking at the street too. So if somebody's walking in the neighborhood at 2 o'clock in the morning, it will assist us because we know she has cameras. If she's willing to cooperate, we might be able to see the video. Although, it is important to understand that all emergencies and calls for service must be placed through 911. This is to ensure that citizens are receiving the highest quality and quickest service possible by the Waxaw Police Department. If you would care to look at the map that's displayed on the screen, you will see that there's nine zones designated throughout our town. Each of the officers have selected an area to become part of that neighborhood. Is there any questions on the zones or how they're set up?
Will the officers be rotating through at times so that, or, well, I know they'll, they'll be assigned a particular zone for a certain period of time, but would eventually will they be like rotating through?
There is an opportunity to that in the future, but right now, our goal is to have the officers have buy-in in that community. That way, if you live in, say, Hillcrest, the south side of the tracks, you know Officer McCray is one of your guys. So if there's a problem, you know, where you just got a security system, or, you know, they're speeding on the streets, some of that nature, that's not a 911 emergency, you can reach out to Officer McCray, you know, via email or calling in here at the, at the PD and set up a meeting with him, and he can sit there and help you out in whatever your concern is. And that way, it gives the officer buy-in and gives the community more of a physical attachment to the officer.
I think that's great policing, to get them to know neighborhood watch kind of things, but there's actually somebody who's watching.
Yes, sir.
That's great.
Any other questions?
All right, any other questions? Lieutenant, again, thank you for all that you do for us. This is a part of the meeting that I like, is get to know you guys and see you guys and have you guys get introduced to us and, and vice versa. So we appreciate all you've done for the, all the time you've been here. So we look forward to more from you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. All right, this time we're gonna go into public hearing. If I'd have a motion to open the public hearing, this is for Waxaw Comprehensive Pedestrian Plan. So may I have that motion, please?
Motion to open the public hearing.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're in. So first up, as it takes a swig of water over there, Blair Israel, who's our senior planner. Blair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and hopefully this will be a part of the meeting that you enjoy too. Mayor, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, it's a pleasure to be here, and it's a pleasure to present in brief form the pedestrian plan that we've been working on for a couple of years now. This is, oh, here we go. As you can see, there's a picture of the current pedestrian plan, which is about 10 years old now. I'm very familiar with that plan because back then Waxaw was about half the size and I was able to do that plan single-handedly. But since then, we've grown tremendously. And so there are, there are new issues and much that needs to be addressed and updated. And so we were able to take advantage of the same grant that funded the previous plan, which is the NCDOT Bicycle and Pedestrian Planning Grant. That requires a 20% match from the town, but the rest of that is all paid for by the state to update our plan in a very comprehensive way. What I mean by that is that these are not small plans. As you can see, this is about 130 pages. And that's basically a requirement from NCDOT. They're the ones who lay out the template for these plans and all the subjects that need to be covered. And they're very thorough. There's a lot that goes into it, and I've been working with them since the beginning of this grant program, and they've constantly been making improvements and all, and so it's, it's a lot. There's a lot there. And so I'll take you through it briefly. Let's see, okay, this is laid out. It's stages here. We've got, we started basically back in late 2021, looking at existing conditions. There was, we formed the steering committee. There was a first public workshop. And then after we get, and I say we, because we worked for, the town worked very much with the consultants, but these were consultants, VHB, that did the brunt of the planning work and put together the plan. So there is an analysis and outreach segment where we had another public workshop, steering committee meetings. And I apologize if the contrast is a little low as we look at, look at this here, but as you can see, the third one is plan development. Right about a year ago, that started, and so that's when we worked, worked on the draft plan and such. And so tonight, here we are in bright white, plan adoption, we hope. It will be presented for adoption tonight, if that's your choice. And it has recently gone through review by the planning board. They recommend it, and so that's where we are right now. So tonight, I just want to just real briefly go over the structure, how the plan is organized, look at some of the major recommendations and get your feedback. So basically, the way it's laid out, I kind of went through it. There is an executive summary. The intro covers the big picture, like what are the big goals that are guiding this, the vision. Again, an analysis of current conditions, recommendations based on those, and then strategies for how to implement the plan. And that's, that's funding, that's timing, prioritization of projects and such. So let's talk about the goals for a second. As you can see, there's, there's seven goals laid out there, and some of them are gonna be fairly obvious. I mean, we've got the widening of NC16, that third goal, and so we want to make sure that that is a pedestrian-friendly facility as much as it can be. But overall, we want to improve connections, fill in the gaps in our current sideways sidewalks and trails, and there are a lot of them. We want to make them more accessible for everyone. And again, these goals were generated not just from town staff or, or the contractor or the consultant, but the steering committee and also from the public input. And so there was a real emphasis from everyone on showcasing what Waxaw has to show off and what people really want to see. It's, it's our historic sites, the cultural sites, and just the natural beauty. So we want to connect to that. And again, there was emphasis on downtown, really having a lot of connections within into downtown and into the planned neighborhood centers that are various parts of town. Safety, of course, and programs that help promote walking. So this map just is an overall view of the existing facilities. So as you can see in the legend, there's sidewalks, crosswalks, trails, other amenities. But I want to point your attention to, one of the public input questions was about rating the existing Waxaw sidewalk network. And it's not too good. You know, there, if, when you add up the poor and the very poor, that's about 50% of the vote. So people, yes, they got out and walked at times, but they felt that, you know, our sidewalks need a lot of work. And so another way of looking at is, or another aspect is, how often do you walk in Waxaw? And even though things, the conditions were as they described, there's still a lot of people who are trying to get out at least a few times a month or more, and either walk to destinations that they need to reach or walk for recreation or the combination of both. So you can see some of the barriers that they, they came up against, and this is from, I just want to mention that, you know, there's multiple surveys that we went out and in-person events where we gathered this input. And so you can see, number one was the crossings, that people didn't feel safe crossing the street in so many places they wanted to. Certainly downtown was part of that, but Puritan and lots of places. And that the connect, the, the network overall of sidewalks, even though we might have quite a few linear miles of sidewalk, it's not all connected. And people can't get from point A to point B like they want. And then unsafe vehicle behavior, as was mentioned, and we all know traffic is a huge problem here, and so pedestrians encounter that too. So there's, you know, safety and concerns about lighting and just the maintenance of what we have. So part of the recommendations in this plan overall is to look at various strategies, various facilities for walking. And so you can see here, things you're gonna be familiar with and some things not as familiar with. The sidewalk, obviously. Shared use path is kind of like a little, a wider walk that can be used for multiple users, bicyclists, pedestrians. And it's a little bit separated from the road, but it still kind of follows the road, that shared use path. And other times you might have a sidewalk on one side, shared use path on the other. Greenways, which I hope everyone is becoming more familiar with and enjoying, we want to see, or our plans call for many more of those or more of that kind of facility to be built and serve Waxaw. One of the ways we can do that is in that middle, the, the, the middle facility type is kind of my favorite, the greenway underpass. It's when you have, you know, you're following a stream oftentimes with greenways, and at times you've gotta cross under a road or over a road or whatever. Under is a lot safer. It's a lot easier. You don't have to look both ways for cars because you're going under them. So there are great opportunities to do that here, and so there are some facilities recommended of that type. Pedestrian bridges as well for smaller creeks and all. I, the gateway is more of a concept. That's not really meant to be a design. It's nothing like that. But some ways to mark when you've entered town. That could be a very small landmark type of facility, but it can also be very connected to the pedestrian system. Wayfinding is simply better signage that helps people get around who are walking or bicycling. And of course, crossing enhancements are huge, which is a great need to improve our crosswalks and other enhancements that make it safe to cross. So this is just a sample of one of the finished maps from the plan. You can see recommended projects in northwest. The plan sort of divides the town into five different segments. And, you know, it's, at this scale, it's hard to make out anything, but there are a lot of facilities that are recommended. This just shows where they are. They're, they're coded by number, and then you can look those up in the, in the listings in the plan to find out more about them. Here you can see the downtown segment, and this is where, really, this map though is about just whatever scored the highest, and it, it all happened to be downtown. And there's reasons for that. It ties into the goals, the emphasis on downtown connections, on safety, which, you know, that's where you see a lot of the safety problems, is where everybody's converging, cars and pedestrians and bicyclists. There are other reasons why the downtown tended to score high, but there was definitely an emphasis on, we really need to serve the downtown and the neighboring, well, the surrounding neighborhoods. So here I want to show you one feature of this plan that I think is, is very helpful. These particular, these, these visualizations of some of the projects where there are six different projects that are, that are highlighted in these visualizations. And each one of these will show, identify the project, show the location, the conditions, like, you know, what's the speed limit there and such. And then show different cross-sections. You can see there sort of a, you know, an ex, a before and after of what the, of what the facility might look like. And you'll see there, you know, what are the constraints here? What, what are the issues that we have to work with with this project and some of the other considerations? And then finally, what's the cost of it? So that's like page one of the visualization. Page two, you're gonna see that sort of a before and after aerial. From the air, what does this project actually look like? And then also from the ground, if you're a pedestrian, what would you see? What's it gonna, how's it going to be different? So, you know, this is simply a Photoshop exercise where you take the existing facility and say, okay, what would it be like if this was made safer? This, this project here, it is outside the town limits, but it is a project that is very much a concern of the town, Cuthbertson Road. And so, you know, that's, that's reaching the, the middle school, that, so the, the sort of the middle of the intersections, and then the southern one would be by the library, and then the northern one by the high school. And so this plan goes a little about, a little bit outside of town boundaries sometimes, just because it affects Waxaw significantly. So last thing I just want to mention, that this, this plan is not a thing, and it's not a thing that just sits by itself. It's coordinated with other plans. We're doing other planning as well. One of those is the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and which has a pedestrian element. And I just want to point out how these two plans are talking to each other. This pedestrian plan is about preserving and establishing continuous open space. That's a goal of the Comprehensive Plan, but it's something that's directly related to the pedestrian plan because of its emphasis on trails. And you'll see there are other points there as well, having to do with trails, the environment, designing to maximize, I mean, our, in the con plan, we're hoping to, we're hoping to streamline, but also build in better ways to, to develop so that it's not just, you know, high density development or whatever, or sprawling development, but smart development that's going to work with the current conditions and try to preserve some of our precious environment. So that's the end of this presentation. There may be lots of questions, I don't know, but later on in the meeting, as you've seen in the agenda, we're gonna ask for adoption of this plan.
Thank you, Blair. Any questions? Any comments across the road? I know you guys have been working on this a long time, and if I remember, this goes back to long before any of us, 2012, did you say you worked on that first?
Well, that was my introduction to Waxaw. I came down here in 2010 to do the first bed plan, so yeah, now I'm trying to promote a plan that's gonna, it's gonna sunset mine.
What, what has been the input? So we, you've been involved in it since 2012, and how much of that has actually been implemented?
Well, I wish I had been more involved in it. I mean, I came in here and for two years, I was kind of living in Waxaw and taking a lot of pictures and doing a lot of writing and all, and came up with a plan that had a lot of, a lot of, you know, very similar to what I just went through, all these different projects that are recommended and the goals and all that. And, you know, it's, a plan is just a plan. A plan is, is a recommendation, a series of recommendations that elected officials can consider and do project by project or not. And so I would love to have seen the 2012 plan more carried out. You know, the vision that's there and the projects that are there, if we had, you know, if Waxaw had been able to do all those projects, it'd be a different town, you know, a lot of, and not just for pedestrians, but also for traffic, the car traffic as well, because there was a big emphasis in that former plan about road connectivity. And these things take time to happen, and these plans are always done with the understanding that you're not gonna do every project. You know, funding is part of the issue, of course, and there are different funding streams for doing these. There's grants, there's the federal grants, state, state-run grants, Carolina thread trail, so many things. But, you know, I would, I would love to have seen more of it happen. It was a small percentage of the 2012 that got happened. So what happens with this plan is really up to you and your successors of how much you want to see accomplished or can accomplish.
Can accomplish. It's always about the funding, isn't it?
Yes.
I appreciate that. All right, any other comments, thoughts?
If I could say one other thing that I meant to say, I went through that list of goals, like seven goals. There's really one big unwritten goal in this whole plan, and that is to give people an option so that they don't have to get in their car. If they can do a walkable trip, you know, that's, that's short enough that you can walk, if the conditions are right, and you're like, why do I have to drive? I could just walk. And so that's relieving pressure for them, but it's also taking a little bit of bite out of the overall traffic situation.
All right. Well, the connectivity is what we are certainly working on, so, and I know you've been a big part of that as well, so appreciate the look on it. And you'll be back in a little bit.
Yep, thank you.
All right, seeing that there's no other questions, there are also, there's no one else signed up to speak on this matter, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all the way around. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up is the chairman of the Union County Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Stoney Rushing, and he's here to give us some updates and their direction on the Union County sewer system. Mr. Rushing, thank you and welcome, welcome to our house.
Thank you for having me. And when I leave, I'll, hopefully, if I've made everybody a little bit mad, I've done my job. There's a lot of folks in the room and a lot of different opinions on growth and how we should grow, and how things should go with sewer and water utilities. So, what I want to do is, I've, I've been a county commissioner, twelve years, I'm working on my fourth term, I think, now, so if I serve this term, I'll be the second-longest-serving commissioner in Union County history. So, bringing a lot of experience, two decades. I was first elected in twenty, two thousand two, so twenty-two, twenty-two, that was not all, eight years, I took a break. I was a recovering politician on the wagon in twenty-fourteen with the school redistricting. So, what I'm here to do is answer any questions. I've heard comments about, you know, that we don't need to kick the can down the road, or comments about weaponizing utilities and things like that. And what I want to do is answer your questions that you have about kind of where we're at, where, where we can go, and not only for Waxaw, but all of Union County. I brought a map with me, it's a little hard for me to see and point at, but all the sewer lines that are in Union County that are under our control are on this map. And so, this gives you an idea of where the water, where the sewer utilities are, what we have today, what's in existence, and then what we're going to have in the future. You know, we're talking about that right now. Next Monday, we have a, how are we going to afford it all meeting? And we ask our staff to come back with a, what's the bang for the buck? Where do you get the most good for the least amount of money? So they're going to be bringing that to us, and we're going to have a time to, to discuss with them, you know, where do we go from here? What do we put our priorities on? Just like your planner there was just telling you, you know, you can plan it, but can you afford it, and how do you afford it? So, really, right now, just, and I'll stay as long as you want or as short as you want, so it's up to you guys what y'all want to find out, what you want to learn. Any questions that you have about what we're doing right now, any concerns?
Well, why don't you continue on? You're heading down the road of telling us the plan, so why don't you give us more information? We all have obviously some.
So, in Union County, we have brought in water from the Yadkin Project. The Yadkin Project is Lake Tillery, brought in water from there. That project is going to cost two hundred million dollars. We had fought for it, we had been in court for it, trying to get an inter-basin transfer to bring water into the Rocky River sub-basin, which it covers two-thirds or more of Union County. The one-third that you live in is called the Catawba Basin, that flows to the Catawba River. You get your water from Van Wyck, in a partnership that we have with Lancaster County. So you have plenty of water, you have enough water to, to serve. We, we use some of that water up in the northern part of the county with an inter-basin transfer, and then we bring it back down to the plant here at Twelve Mile Creek, approximately two million gallons worth of sewer. The Twelve Mile Creek Sewer Plant is a seven-point-five million gallon per day. And I, the numbers kind of bore people, but everybody write this number down and put it in your head, two-hundred-and-eighty gallons per day. That's the figure that one house, four-bedroom house, uses per day on assumption. Whenever we go to the state and ask for anything, we assume two-hundred-and-eighty gallons per day. So right now, the Twelve Mile Creek, which is just down the road here, that plant is serving currently six million gallons per day, but it is rated for seven-point-five. So you have one-point-five million gallons a day that you have capacity to build, and that's the projects that we have in the works, the ones that have been approved by Waxaw, by all the other towns around, by the county. So we have, in the works right now, approximately five-thousand-three-hundred houses that can be built on the remaining usage. We have another.
And that's a permitted use right now, permitted, so it's different than the capacity.
Currently, the twelve-month rolling average is about six million gallons per day. So, with that twelve-month rolling average, you can take, you can build approximately fifty-three-hundred warehouses, because we have one-point-five million gallons remaining that are on the books.
And that number is for the basin?
That's for the, that, that's for the.
It's not specifically for the town, it's for the basin?
Twelve Mile Creek Sewer Plant. You can build, there will be built another approximately five-thousand-three-hundred houses.
But again, those are all in the basin and not specifically within the town limits?
No, not within Waxaw. Yeah, it, some are in Waxaw, some are in the county, some are in.
Just want to make that clear so they understand, right?
Yeah, so no, it's in that basin. You have that many houses. In the northern part of the county, we have a planned sewer plant that's been in the plan since before I was elected in two thousand and two. And they've always wanted a Rocky River sewer plant. But we, you're in the town of Waxaw, in the county of Union, in the state of North Carolina, in the United States of America. And everywhere along that route, somebody has a say in what's going to happen. So, the policy back in two thousand and two was to approve as many projects as possible. So on the Twelve Mile Creek Sewer Plant, which is going to eventually go to twelve million gallons per day, so double what you see now, double it, and, and not just in Waxaw, but the whole basin, you can handle doubling it. So you have the sewer plant up north that was proposed, we had US Fish and Wildlife step in and said, we don't want a sewer plant up here. And we asked why? And they said because they didn't want impervious surfaces to go into the creeks, which was the critical area of the Carolina Hill Splitter. So they stopped, they wanted, they wanted us to stop all the sewer plant plans for that area. And we went to our staff, and I was on the boat for this, and we rode three to two, no, three to one, one of the commissioners wasn't there, to work with US Fish and Wildlife and stop it. Well, if we stopped it, we got a bypass, a Monroe bypass, that was the gift, that was the carrot, that we dangled in front of them at the US Fish and Wildlife, and that's what they were asking for. And instead, our manager came back and said he wasn't going to do that. And he took it on himself to say, no, we're just going to keep going the direction we're going. And in, in the meantime, we lost the Monroe bypass, and we have to pay a toll to ride on it if we're using that every day. A little bit away from here, so, but the people who use it could have had a free road to run. Highway sixteen, you know, we were talking about sixteen being four-laned many years ago. We've done everything, we've worked with sidewalk issues, we've worked with connotations, anything that we needed to work with in the county to make that happen. And, and, you know, being on carload, if the money's not there, if the state of North Carolina doesn't give us the money, all the planning in the world can't fix the state changing their mind or putting something behind. So we want to make sure that, what we're doing now, the one issue that I have that I'm very concerned with, and this is when I got elected in twenty-fourteen, the reason I got back into politics, was redistricting. So Cuthbertson Road, as mentioned earlier by one of the speakers, Cuthbertson Road, there's another project in the Wesley Chapel area that we approved. There's a project in Wesley Chapel, between Wesley Chapel and Indian Trail. And these, one of the reasons I voted to approve, and there were many houses, the reason I voted to approve them was they were senior citizen targeted houses. One was deed restricted, the other one was a four-story apartment for exclusively senior citizens who needed a place to live. And the reason I supported those is because they used the sewer that we had left for those fifty-three-hundred homes. We used that sewer to provide for the people that didn't add to the traffic as much, people that didn't have kids in schools. The school board did a wonderful thing, and they said, okay, we're going to take the kids, if you, if you develop, if you want to develop this property, we're going to switch your kids to a different school. So, I think the one on Cuthbertson is, is actually districted in the Parkwood District, not in the Cuthbertson District, which is right beside of it. Because the idea the developer sold was not kids, no kids, very little kids. And that was a big selling point, because we don't want to overcrowd the schools and have to redistrict kids. We have, in Union County, we have forty-one thousand public school children, and we have forty-six thousand seats. So the town of Monroe, city of Monroe, they are right now expanding tremendously because they, they have sewer, they have availability. But they also have school space, so it doesn't really affect us from a school selling point. As county commissioner, we have to fund schools, the towns, they don't have to fund schools, you have, we have the obligation to do that. We spend most of our budget on that. But kicking the can down the road, we never had water in the Rocky River Basin, so I build a sewer plant that you can't serve with water. And that was, you know, I've, I've been accused of that by other commissioners, you know, well, you should have done this years ago. Years ago, in two thousand and six, we had a recession in seven and eight, but there was one more thing that happened that would have killed us, and it would have affected every ratepayer in Union County. And that was that DWQ, Division Water Quality up in Mooreswood, we had some projects that were turned down, commercial projects, and we were asked by the developer to find out what was going on. Instead of going to our staff, the two commissioners and the former commissioner drove to Mooreswood, and we asked them what's going on. And they said, well, we can't get your staff to give us numbers. I said, okay, what numbers are you asking for? And they said, we want to see your permitted and pending numbers for the Twelve Mile Creek Sewer Plant. I said, okay, is this what you're looking for? And I handed them the numbers, they said, yeah, this is what we've been asking for. And we were at twelve million gallons on that three-million-gallon-a-day plan in two thousand and six. And they said, well, we've turned down the Sun Valley Movie Theater, we've turned down Kensington Elementary School, and we've turned down Sandy Ridge Elementary School. I said, whoa, 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 they're opening next month. They got kids showing up next month to go to school there. What do you mean, you've, you've denied them? Well, they don't have sewer. Okay. So we hauled sewer away from there for months in trucks. We would truck the sewer away from those schools and send them somewhere else. So, that kind of planning, where, where we look at planning, you know, you look at planning from the town, and you take comments, and people don't like the rezonings, but the sewer is the, really the control of high-density growth. If you don't have sewer, you can't have high-density growth. And it's, rezonings are not wrong. And please, if you're in here and you think that rezoning is the root cause, it's, it's not, it's the, it's the sewer. And you have to pay for it. We, it's going to cost us forty million dollars to expand fifty-three-hundred homes worth of sewer over here at Twelve Mile Creek. That money comes from somewhere. So where's it come from? Can it come from the developers? Well, in the past, it did, and then the developers sued us and said you can't charge an impact fee. And they won, a potential of fifty million dollars. And we whittled that down and worked that down, and, and they got some money, but it wasn't nowhere near fifty million. But, we had to go through, the state gave us a new system, and that's called a system development fee. And right now, it's about seventy-four-hundred dollars for water and for sewer. If they can give more, then the ratepayers can see a decrease in their rates, not an increase in their rates to provide for new growth, which they get back from the home loan. So this is, this is kind of what we're looking at. How do we, how do we expand reasonably on time, and that we don't get a bunch of developers? Because I'm one of the most pro-growth development commissioners in Union County history. I've never been accused of being anti-growth, I've been accused the other way. However, what I believe in is that if a man comes in to, to develop a property, a woman comes in to sell her land, all this process is that you should tell people the truth. And the truth is, right now, we don't have that much sewer, and we got to be mindful, if we had to build a school, how are we going to build it if we don't have any sewer? If we wanted to build something with jobs, how do we build it if we promised it all out to, to homes? So we have a two-to-three-year period where Twelve Mile Creek's going to be watched closely. And we're trying our best to figure out a way to fund it without raising rates through the roof on your, your citizens, and the citizens that all pay for that. And I think we can do that. But, at any time, the state, federal government, to make a step in and, and stop this. So, so we all have to plan together, and, and the school system is part of that plan, and, and we all have to work together. The roads, the state with the roads, we need the, we need that road. You know, my fellow commissioners said, you're going to get us that money, right? You're on, you're on carload, you're going to get us all the money we need. But I know that that's impossible, that one person can't do it, and that we all want it in sixteen. I, I told Mr. Maria, he said, oh, Stoney, I see you in Waxaw, I was coming down for a campaign event. And I said, Pedro, no, I love it here, they throw a parade up and down sixteen every time I come. Bumper to bumper, bumper to bumper. So, so we want it to be successful here as well. I love that people move here, I love that people want to move here. However, we do have some challenges. Commercial, you know, we, one of the things with commercial, I looked up two commercial properties here in Waxaw. A large home improvement store and a fast food restaurant. And what, how much, use that two-eighty number, how much sewer do you think a home improvement store that provides millions of dollars worth of tax base, how much do you think that uses for sewer? How many houses were it? Any guesses? It uses less than half a house in January. Throughout the year, the number goes up. In June, it's the highest, probably, June, July is the highest. And can you rate that on the water bill? What's the water bill? How many gallons a day are they using? They use more in June and July. Why does a, why do a home improvement store use more water in June and July? They're irrigating plants, and that goes into the atmosphere. So you've got millions of dollars in tax base in one building that, that uses very little, and, I mean, almost minuscule amounts of your sewer capacity. So you can still build neighborhoods, and you can still do those kind of things, but that commercial base is, is tremendous for that. They don't put kids in school, and they don't use a lot of water in sewer, well, they use a lot of water, they don't use a lot of sewer. A, a fast food restaurant uses about seven houses a day worth of, of water. So, but you think about, where does all that water go? They clean the floors, they clean the restaurant, they clean the bathrooms, but most of it probably goes out with ice, soda, it goes, is drank, used at home. People don't like to use the restrooms, that's just a fact. And so, so those restaurants and those buildings and those commercial entities, they just don't use a lot. We have a, a business at the airport, hires probably fifty to a hundred people maybe, they use less than two houses worth of sewer a day. And, and, and that's wonderful for the economy. So as you're thinking about stuff, think about the schools, consider the schools. Are we building apartments, which I have nothing against apartment? Are we building apartments with one-bedroom for single men, women, mother, young, two, married couple, just married? Are we building five-bedroom townhomes for kids and families? Can the schools handle that? Can the schools take all that? If they can't, where are we going to put them? Because even though we got school space all over the county, how much do we have here? And what are the school boards, what's the school board going to do? Where are they going to put them? There's just a lot of things about sewer that affect us all. And, and you've got towns around you, they don't want sewer. They, you know, they could care less, you know, they, they don't want, you know, you may use, you may use up a hundred thousand gallons a year, they may not use up ten, because they just don't want the growth. And that's their business, just like your business is, is what you're. One of the things I know that y'all have a concern with is the ETJ, and that you want to be able to control the properties around you. Well, I would love for you to control the properties around you, because if you give them police protection, and you give them garbage pickup, and you give them the things that the county can't do, I have no problem with that, I think that's excellent. However, if, if we're going to have the choice between townhomes and a commercial project, what do you, what do you think the county wants? We want the commercial project that doesn't put kids in the school, that doesn't put the burden, you know, any more burdens than we have to. And, you know, I've thrown a lot at you, and, and please, you know, if, any questions now with, with anything that we've got that you're worried about? And it hit me hard, I saw where you said you didn't like the arrows. I, I like the arrows in the front, I don't like them in the back. I've always told somebody, if you, if you're leading anything, it's the ones in the back that really hurt. But, but if y'all have hard questions, give them to me. I'd like to, I'd like to take them, I'd like to explain anything that I can about how, what we're looking at for the future. And, and I can just tell you, low taxes, low utility rates, great schools, that's, that's what we're, that's, that's the direction the majority of our board has taken, and that's what we plan to do. And, and again, I, I should have come down here a long time ago and talked to you about these things. But, but, you know, Mayor, I know that you're in the development business, you understand it. I understand it, I have no issue with it, as long as the people here that are living here and have been living here can get to work, can come home to their families, and have their children educated to be the best people that they can be, that, that's what I'm concerned with. And I, and I think every elected official is concerned with it, except for, sometimes we just might not know all the details behind how to get there, and get there together.
Just a, a comment, and then I think the question, if you can go back to.
Just a comment, and then I think the question, if you can go back to with comment, is you and I have had this discussion over the last three, four years in talking about the ability. I think we were in one of your planning meetings, I think my entire staff was there actually. It was over at the college. We were doing that, and we talked about, and I think the question was raised up, and you had asked Brian Matthews about the, how do you give out, reserve the sewer? So we both know that if sewers first come, first serve. And that's by state law, just for reasons. And, you know, the legislative agendas on most of the state levels, they require that we keep up with the growth, if you will. So as much as we'd like to have some retail business, there's two thoughts to that. Obviously, we can't pick and choose. You found that out that day when you asked Brian. The other part is, is the retail doesn't come first, usually the rooftop. So you play this very, very delicate game on how do you shape your municipality or your county or your state, whatever, based on, you know, what you can do. The question, I think, maybe for more of the commissioners to hear, is, you know, what are you doing next? What's the timelines? Where are you going? When's what going to happen? That's kind of what we're interested in hearing from you today.
Do you all do a legislative goals, agenda, meeting and then turn that to the state?
Not yet.
You should. And number one should be, allow the local municipalities and the counties. Union County is kind of odd that we do sewer. Most of, like City of Rogue, they do it themselves. But we can, I believe, and I've been told over the years, in a time of scarcity, we can do commercial in front of residential. And that's what we're challenging our attorneys to figure out right now. And there's a belief that, you know, when you have scarcity, they also have a formula. And that formula goes...
So is the process.
Like the 280 that I told you about, the houses? They also have a formula. And that formula, whatever it is, whatever type of business it is, doesn't turn into reality. You know, they have to set aside so much. But then, once that rolling average comes in, you can still do those housing projects that you've been planning to do. It's just, it has to go by that rolling average, because that's the telltale sign. If you're only using 6 million gallons a day, but you're by the books, by the college books and everybody else's standards, you're supposed to be using 9 million gallons a day, then there's a way to do that. And we're asking the state to say, if you have a commercial project, don't let it be held up by a residential project. Let it go first, let it go through, let it go ahead and get their process. I mean, you've got projects here that are already approved for sewer that are just waiting on easements. They're just waiting on easements. It's not, nothing with us, nothing with you. They just need an easement. And I've thought for the longest time, they didn't have sewer. They weren't in the line for sewer, but that's not the case.
So timelines. So let's talk about 12 Mile.
12 Mile Creek.
12 Mile.
Two to three years.
So tell us the incrementals. Tell us the incrementals. Where are we at now?
We're in the planning and design, and then it'll go into construction. When I would start, I'd be honest with you, until I saw concrete, trucks riding in and out, I would slow down on the rezonings. Because if we don't have enough sewer for what we have today, we've got so many people in line, I would just shorten that line. And somebody that comes to you, like, this is what we've been telling people. They kind of wanting a pump station. Well, the pump stations are being put in areas that weren't necessarily meant for development. We used to look at pump stations as gold mines. And that's what we would call them, because if you had a pump station approval, which we hardly ever did, and you got a gold mine, that property, which was undevelopable, is now developed at our, you know, our 40, it wouldn't be our 40 anymore, it could be our 20 or 10 or whatever. But they allowed more development in odd places. So we've stopped on the pump stations. We've, I think you guys were going to, you got approved for a pump station. I think the school gave you the easement, right?
If you're talking about the South End?
Yeah, and that saved you money.
Yes, that's correct. And we just paid our $50,000 system development fees.
And listen, the goal, oh, listen, by the way, those Sandy Ridge and Kensington had had paid half theirs upfront when they got turned down. So, you know, when you have, that was what I wanted, was the schools to give you the gravity without going to pump station. Because it costs us to replace those things, it costs us to maintain. With the, when the trucks start rolling in, which as soon as we find a way how we're going to pay for it, whether it's through higher system development fees or whether it's through just saving money, if we have to. This year, our public works partner brought in over 73 million dollars. The cost of running that plant, or the, all the plants and everything else, is about 36 million. We've got money for replacement, renewal, things that are going, people that already live here. And system development fees that were collected were 11 million dollars. I've never seen, with a little bit more money, we could even go to, you know, possibly up to 20 million dollars a year. In two years, you would pay for the expansion of 12 Mile Creek.
So the money is coming in, the revenue is generating.
Revenue's coming. The Yadkin project I told you about, it went from 200 million to 300 million overnight.
We all experienced that.
And then, when that happened, the plant that was up in the northern part of the county, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife didn't want, trying to figure out what to do with it, that plant went from 130 million, which that extra money would have paid for it, it went to 300 million dollars. And again, do we focus on the reality of 12 Mile Creek? Or do you focus on the dream of one in the north? Once we build it, or if it's ever built, you will get 2 million gallons a day back at the 12 Mile Creek. But you've got plenty to build, tens of thousands of houses coming. And it's just, how fast do we want to grow? Who's going to pay for it?
Well, the money that you have, again, going back to, so the question, I guess, all the time, not only from the board and sometimes even the staff and some of the residents, what is the plan? What is the plan? When, I mean, they're looking for very hard timelines. I'm going to do this by this because I'm required to do this by this date. So what, can you articulate those to all of us?
Yeah, the developers are the main ones that want to know where they are in the queue, where are we at in the line? And it's hard to answer, because our staff, you know, the way they did business and the way we're trying to go to do business is different. They fixed a lot of the problems from 2006 to 2014 by not approving over the amount that the sewer plant would hold. So in the past, everybody walking in the door got told yes. You know, did you get to tell yes? You have a brother that wants sewer. Tell him to come in and ask for some too, we'll give him 2 million gallons a day. So everybody was getting sewer. And it caused a lot of bankruptcies. It caused a lot of developers to go out of business. It cost a lot of money. And that's been fixed. So now, what we're trying to fix is the line, where are you at in the line and when do we stop? But as a county commissioner with 14 municipalities that have their own ideas about things, it's tough. It's like herding cats at times, because you may want it and the neighbor in town hates it. That's where the donut holes come in. That's where the problems come in with having to say, who's going to build what where? I hope that, you know, again, by communicating, we tried to get a sewer allocation policy, where that we gave you some sewer and we gave the town that didn't want any sewer a little bit of sewer. And if they didn't want it, then, okay, you don't want it, can we have some back to go to this other town? And it kind of makes us all work together to make sure that the planning that we're doing, it's not like that we're going to let one town say, I got a billion gallons worth of sewer and I'm not giving it to anybody. It's that we have to plan and where's, where the school's going to be able to go? Can the schools handle it? You know, what kind of decisions are you, is one town over another making over growth? Are you, you know, if Waxahau is doing nothing but building single family homes with four or five bedrooms, it would mean that we're going to have to build a school down here or we're going to have to find a place for those kids to go. So it helps us get ahead of the problems and do the planning that has been spoken about.
But as you know, we go down through the process. When a project comes in, it goes through all of the agencies to weigh in on what they have to plan for in the future. So yes, it is as it costs. I think, you know, if I could kind of go back to the question that we get asked all the time, when?
When is the sewer plant going to be built?
When, when are each phase, when does each phase of the improvements to 12 Mile, what are the timelines in those? The specific timeline?
Timeline for having it built out? Timeline for having sewer flowing into it? Is two to three years.
Two to three years. So you're starting now, you're in design phase? Is that what I remember hearing?
Design, planning, yeah, design phase now.
And you're in design phase right now to the 9 million gallon level, is that correct?
To the 9 million gallon.
And why don't we go to the 12? Because we talked about, you already have...
Again, scarcity.
What scarcity?
So to go to 12 million gallons, we're looking at, I think, 80 to 100 million dollars.
So are you talking about scarcity of...
Scarcity in being able to manage some of what we have going on. If it's a free for all...
Well, again, people will ask us the same questions. So we're just trying to get that out of you guys, is to, what are the timelines and why not?
I don't think it should go to 12 yet, because it's a free for all. And the concerns that they have about traffic, in 20 years, well, in 14 years, 15 years, Union County has gone from 3 million gallons a day on the 12 Mile Creek sewer plant to 6 million gallons a day currently being used. All this growth that you talked about, that the planner talked about, is on 3 million gallons. That's a lot of growth in 15 years. But it's only 3 million gallons of sewer. Not only the growth here, this growth goes all the way to Indian Trail, Stiles, all that. That's not counting Monroe. I think I figured it out the other day, in Union County, County Monroe, we could build probably 15,000 houses with what we've got planned, at least right now, without any other sewer plants.
Well, the market does take, you do take that into consideration, because when we were running it a little bit higher, we'd have, say, 40 permits a week. And I think last week or last month, we only had four. So it does move around, and so it isn't a constant. And you know this, there are properties that were in the queue, so to speak, that never got built.
Never got built.
Okay, those allocations or reservations were set aside. And then you can't even find some of the entities. I know down on Typar's project down to the south, they're not started yet. As you know, here in Millbridge, that project was approved around 2000, and we are just now, 22 years later, building it out. So it doesn't happen all at one time.
Yeah, it takes a long time. But again, if you, if you have everybody walk in the door at one time and say, okay, I'm here to get my sewer.
But you know they don't build out the day after they walk out the door.
And for eight years, we didn't build hardly anything.
Right.
The county laid off people. We, from 2007 till 2013, hardly any growth occurred in county. So if you've got 300, we've got, just to give you an example, we've got 1.3 billion dollars worth of utility projects that could be done. We're working on about a 400 billion, 400 million dollar loan right now. We're going to pay 25 million dollars a year. So if we go out and borrow an additional 500 billion and an additional, up to get to the point where we're going to 1.3 billion to do all the projects that people want to do, and growth stops because of inflation, materials, the economy, whatever, I guess who's going to pay the bill?
Well, we all do. It's the way it is. And you build roadways that don't get used, anything, schools that don't get used. Well, that's just, and that's why we get the questions on timelines. You know, we talk about, you know, Millbridge building out over 22 years, 1,900 houses over 22 years. And what we're hearing you say is you've got some timelines to get to the 9 GBD at, gallons per day GPD in two years. And then you're anticipating, did I hear you say correctly, you're anticipating that even that reservation is already used up? Or you're saying that and we don't have a system?
The 9 million is not used up.
Okay.
The 7.5 that is currently rated on that plant is spoken for. The 9 million is not spoken. We've stopped people at 7.5 million gallons. That's where the line ends.
And that 7.5 million is the reservations that are some properties that even the ownership doesn't exist anymore?
Could be. But that's the problem, is that you tell people, like, I think you've got a project through the middle of town, that the owner has annexed in, I believe, and needs sewer. And, you know, once that line opens up, he needs to be at the front of that line. And that's why he's needing. And we've had another one that I thought all this time, that needed to be at the front of the line for the next batch of sewer. And he's got the sewer, he just doesn't have easements. So...
But those are, their problems are not ours.
That's their problems. The county can't solve that problem neither can you.
All right.
I think you have a question, ma'am?
Yeah, I was going to say, anybody else have any questions, thoughts, comments you want to weigh in on around the board? Mayor Portem, you want to light up that microphone?
It is. Thank you again for coming and speaking with us this evening. Just two quick questions. One question is, this information that you're sharing with our board this evening, is that something that you are going to be sharing with the other municipalities here in Union County?
Yeah, we'll be glad to. And I've shared it many times in our meetings and in our planning, information.
When I say share, I mean coming to their meetings to share the same information.
Yeah, we'll be glad to.
Is there a schedule for that?
No, no, not scheduled. I've been asked by the WUMA, Western Union Municipal Committee or Cities or whatever, I've been asked to come to them at the end of this month and talk to the, I guess, the mayors and the people that meet with that.
Okay. My next question is, is the North Carolina League of Municipalities, you spoke about legislative goals and agendas and asked us if we had that. But as you do know, I believe you know that, they do have legislative goals that they do create for the municipalities. A directive of the Legislative Policy Committee, which I sit on with North Carolina League of Municipalities, is that we are to identify and form policy positions on key issues for North Carolina. And one of the legislative goals for the 2023-24 session that we did was resilient infrastructure. And the, one of the questions or the statements within that is to create an adequate and permanent funding stream for local infrastructure. Infrastructure, including roads, water, sewer, stormwater, parks, beaches, is critical to economic development and job creation. Many cities in state are growing, creating a constant need for investment to keep pace with population growth. Many cities and towns also have aging infrastructure that must be replaced. So creating a funding stream for the local infrastructure would allow for better planning to meet the needs. Are you familiar with this particular goal or...
Yes, and the funding, like I said, we make 73 million dollars a year of water and sewer utilities. That's the, that's the, that's the income in Union County, which is a massive income. When we look at replacement, renewal, repairs, that's covered. What's not covered is 1.3 billion dollars worth of new stuff. And the 1.3 billion dollars worth of new stuff, that's the concern. So how do we afford some new stuff without paying 1.3 billion dollars for it? And that's where the newcomers, a person wanting to live in Union County, the developer, the development community, that it depends on what they pay. If you put in a well in Septic, where I live, I live way over here in the east, you see where there's no green, where there's no sewer? I live way over there. And we rely on septic tanks, wells. I have county water because I'm near a school. But we rely on septic tanks and wells. And those septic tanks, here's what you're going to see in the future soon from the state. There's a, there's a law, there's a statute, legislation that says that we have to test wells. And when we test those wells, if they come up with arsenic, which Union County is full of, if they come up with any contaminants, that well has to be put on a whole house water filter from that well. Those water filters cost, I've heard anywhere from 5,000 to 20,000 dollars. So you add that to the cost of the house, the well is going to be about 6,000, the septic tank's going to be about 5,000. So you're looking at a impact fee of...
We can't do impact fees in North Carolina. Impact fees in North Carolina are not legal?
I said this.
Okay, not legal?
We have system development fees, impact fee. The impact of that well, septic tank, and that filter is going to make housing in eastern Union County cost prohibitive.
So if we look over here in the green section where we are?
Yeah.
Okay. And they do talk about planning and keeping pace with the population growth and the infrastructure there. So your planning that you're doing now, you're saying all relates to the 9 million gallons So your planning that you're doing now, you're saying all relates to the nine million gallons and the new system that you're putting in that's going to take the two to three years. Is that the planning that we're having moving forward?
Yes, we're planning, so as part of that planning is the system development fee. Can we charge more for it? And the answer was yes. Last year we charged some more for it and we went from five, and that with the increased growth. We went from five million gallons, five million dollars per year to 11 million dollars per year in new income. So the development, the building that's going on produced, you know, double, almost close to double what it did the year before. If we see that continue, you know, you'll be able to pay for that plan about the time that it's built. Uh, what you, and again, which camp or it's throwing a lot of other new stuff in there. Monroe's got that part of the county. When you look at affordable housing, you know, Monroe is where a lot of your affordable housing is gonna be built.
But is Monroe on a separate system?
Yes, Monroe's on a completely separate.
That's completely separate.
Completely separate.
From our, our municipality and some other municipalities here in Union County.
You're on the 12 Mile Creek.
Okay, so they're separate. So we're not, we're gonna leave them alone over there. Um, the other, the other.
No, we're, I can't.
You can't.
Leave them alone because I'm the county commissioner.
As pertains to Waxahaw and some municipalities where we have, we're working with, um, Union County, our commissioners and state and everyone else. We're looking at that right now and answering questions for our citizens and residents. Okay. You made another statement, um, where you talked about commercial development. And how commercial development, you know, is good and more affordable like that. We're looking to do commercial development, but with commercial development, we now have developers who due to the sewer system. Um, feel that they would not be able to get sewer if they wanted to develop here in Waxahaw. We have Prescott Village, which is right here, where we could have commercial development, which would create jobs and, you know, things for our citizens to go to. So would that be something that would be offered and available to them if we had commercial developers who came forward?
Yes, and that's why, that's why we have to go to Raleigh and ask permission for this. We believe that we have a legal argument that the scarcity, that we can say, hey, we're gonna put this XYZ shopping center at the first of this. It's not gonna use that much sewer, even though, even though we have to plan for it to use a lot of sewer, the 12 month rolling average is not gonna be there. So, like, you know, we can do it a couple of ways. You can not approve a neighborhood and say, we're gonna use this for commercial. Or, uh, we can do it through state legislation, which is what I think, that's, that's the way I think is the best way. And that's why we've asked for it to be a legislative goal. We'd ask you to do the same. This, this, uh, property right across the road, the developer had to go get a septic tank to build a.
The Union County property?
The Union County property.
The Union County property, a donut hole.
They had to go get a septic tank for that storage warehouse that they were planning to build there. That's ridiculous. There's, there's a sewer plant right there. A set, a storage building is not gonna use one house worth. It's gonna use less than probably a quarter of a house worth of sewer in a day.
Okay, so that's a Union County property as you're talking septic. So we're talking our Prescott Village property, okay? Where commercial development is something that we'd like, many residents would like to see. That is something that if we had that opportunity to do, that that would, you say, be put at the forefront.
Which we want you to have.
And you want us to have the opportunity to do.
But currently, that isn't the law.
There's times that we challenge the state. And there's times that we win, and there's times that we lose. But I believe if any smart representative that we have in Union County would agree. That we need to be able to put a commercial project in front of a residential neighborhood. And I'm not talking a massive, I mean, 100 homes, you could build 100 of those.
We have to live within the laws you do as well.
That was my next statement. We have laws that state, how, how is it that you can say yes to the commercial? And no to the residential when we have those laws on the books, which is what we try to follow, those laws. Stating that we cannot deny if it is something that is permitted. Because then you're talking about fines that can also come on to the town if we do so, that we can be fined for denying.
Or sued.
You can deny any residential or commercial rezonement that you want. You can deny any, any one.
But there are state laws and guidelines, as you know, that we.
You can deny any commercial or residential.
We can't.
We cannot.
We cannot.
Then why do they come before you?
It's, it's on.
Then why do they come before you and ask?
They come before us and ask, but it is already permitted. And we say, no, we're denying you, but we're going to grant commercial.
We, we are a zoned community.
We are zoned.
We are a completely zoned community. So even if, if you wanna talk minimums. They by, by state law, they can come in and build tomorrow if they meet all the requirements of our then existing zoning codes and ordinances, which the town is already, I'm sorry?
What allows that?
Our zoning laws. Jeff?
And what else?
Would you like to speak to that?
And, and what else allows that?
I don't know.
Sewage capacity. If you don't have sewage capacity.
It, it doesn't matter about. Now, what, here's what I'm saying. It doesn't matter about. Sewer is not our issue for discussions with an applicant that comes in. We go through the process, now that's the end result, but sewer isn't something that we can grant them. They come in, they can get their project fully approved, but then they have to go to the county to take those next steps, much like you were talking earlier about easements. So you can grant a project approval, you can do all that stuff, but they have to solve their own problems.
So if we have a agreement with the town on sewer, that you have so much. I think that what helps the town do is say, we have 100,000 gallons of sewer. What do we want to do? Do we want to build a huge residential neighborhood that have taken a halt? Or do we want to build a new commercial project?
We can't do that.
We can't do that.
If the state allows us to.
By state law, we can't do that.
We can't do that.
If the state allows you to, absolutely. And that's what we're asking.
Again, we have to deal, if the project comes in tomorrow before the state law is changed, if it is.
Not only can you build the commercial, you can build the other too, because the commercial is using so little, so little. That you could build the houses and the commercial if the 12 month rolling average works out. So, so again, what we've done, and as the county is, we've been turning down a lot of rezonings because of the situation with the 12 Mile Creek Plant. We just recently turned down a rezoning for 40 homes. There's uncertainty about the pump stations that's available to it. There's uncertainty about the thing. Forty homes, hardly a big deal. But there's uncertainty with the 12 Mile Creek Sewer Plan and there's uncertainty with the pump station. So, so again, think of, y'all, you guys, there's towns like Wake County, the towns there, they work with the town that serves the sewer. And there, there's a town that serves sewer instead of the county. So, so I just want you to understand that there are options and there are legislative solutions that we're looking for. And it'll help you, it won't hurt you. It's not gonna hurt you.
But you have to look for those solutions and have those legislative policies in place, because if they are not in place as a town legally. And by state law, we can be fined for doing things like that.
So do you know what options we have?
So if you are saying that you are looking to work with the town, being Waxahaw or any other municipality here in Union County. Then that is something that as county commissioner and chair, that you form that liaison to do so, to work with us in understanding and, you know, getting these goals met. But to ask us to go against state law, which then can put our citizens or residents and the town in jeopardy by denying, without it already being a legal legislative policy in place. Then that, you know, is going to put us in jeopardy as a town.
Yeah, but my, my situation, my suggestion to you, you can do whatever you want, is that you slow down on the rezonings, residential rezonings for now. And tell those people, come back a year. When you see trucks going into that 12 Mile Creek Sewer Plant.
So deny, deny. You, deny.
Well, just ask them, I ask developers all the time and say, hey, look, I don't think that the school capacity is gonna be there for your subdivision.
But that's something separate, because we work with our school system when things come in place. We have, we, we go to the schools, we say, hey, what's gonna happen here? We look for traffic impact, uh, studies to see how is the traffic going to flow. We look for a number of different issues when we go to look at an area to see, is this school gonna be able to handle this capacity? Or what's happening over here in this area? So we're looking at all of that.
Have you ever voted against one?
What, against, uh?
The schools came in and said, we don't have capacity. Have you ever voted against that?
It hasn't happened yet.
It hasn't happened. They've never come to us.
Had ever, the schools come in and say, we're over capacity.
School has not.
School has not.
Unfortunately, because they've, they've come to us and several have said.
They tell us we have capacity more in the south, south end, Parkwood area. They tell us that they have the capacity. This is part of the process, Jeff, is right?
Yes, that's correct. It's part of our technical review committee process.
Aside that y'all will be told one thing and the county will be told another about the school system. But, but.
Always interesting to us.
Here's the option, here's the, here's the option the county has. We can put no money into a new sewer plant.
But you collect fees for it.
No, we collect fees for a lot of things. We can.
You, you've got development fees.
But we don't have to build a sewer plant.
You've got development fees.
Just prove that we don't have to build a sewer plant.
You've got money from the state.
The air on our board means a lot.
It does.
The people that put us there, their vote means a lot. But it's not, but I will tell you all this. Unplanned, no growth will kill a community. I have a house in Scotland County, the tax rate there is a dot. They got no growth. And my tax rate there is a dollar growth. It's horrible. The schools are not what they should be. It's horrible. So, so what? It's sometimes may, you may not feel right about what's going on in a town. But if it's better planned and worked together with everybody, county, everybody, and it's not digging into your pockets. If your tax rate's going down, that's the way it should be going down. Many hands make light work. And as long as your stuff's going down, then it's being managed right. If you see your taxes going up, if you see your utility rates going up, and you see your growth going up, the growth is not benefiting you. That's the only way that you benefit from growth. You don't benefit from sitting in traffic, you don't benefit from sitting, paying $4 a gallon for gas and sitting in a parking lot.
Okay, but I, but I do understand that. And I don't wanna run down a rabbit hole on something that may be different. And we may or may not have the same rules to play by. We certainly know what ours are. We certainly feel that we have a clear understanding from our legal counsel. We certainly have a clear understanding of what our zoning is. And so, once that zoning, which it is, we've pre-zoned the entire town. So we don't have very many changes of zone, uh, that we are looking at. The only reason that we might have a change of zone is a special use, a change from a residential to say, a hospital use. Those are the kinds we get. Everything else is already zoned. So we live by that, we know what that is, and that is the law that we live by. And then, and we tell our people all the time, until that law is changed, then we have to abide by it, by the existing law. So that may or may not be the difference, and I'm not sure what you're speaking to on different laws, because they kind of run across the state. But in some cases, you have conditional zonings in certain areas. We don't have that. So we, we exist differently.
You can ask a developer to put in sidewalks.
We do all the time.
Do all the time.
We, we have, we have on the last three projects that came to us. We got more out of that.
Conditional rezoning where we have to, they, they may have to do a certain way, they, you know, they ask for a certain density. You know, there was even things years ago where they'd tell them what color trees to plant, what color.
We have, and that's why we have our, we really trust and in good faith, we trust our zones and our ordinances that we've developed through our land development code. That is our guidebook. We don't vary very much from it at all.
Well, you're fortunate that the other towns around you are not asking for much sewer. Waxahaw's been traditionally R40, Marvin, you know, they, they've had a lot of R40 talk, Wesley Chapel.
But again, they're different than we are.
You're very fortunate.
They're, they're very different. We, we have always been a town that's different than they are.
The 12 Mile Creek is, is basically, the majority of it could go to Waxahaw.
So let me just end by saying that I appreciate your coming to speak to us and to, um, thank you for the information that you provided. As you stated and stood here, I'd like to see more conversations, because we have not had a conversation such as this with you. Um, through our boards, and I've been here for a considerable amount of time in town of Waxahaw. And I would like to see these conversations, as you've stated, you want to reach out to the other municipalities. And getting those municipalities together here in Union County and speaking with them with this information as you're sharing with us. And allowing our municipality, other municipalities and boards to come together with Union County. So that we can work together to figure this out, to work this out and be able to move together in a cohesive manner. Which is very productive for our citizens here in the town of Waxahaw and also throughout Union County, which is what we're trying to. Our citizens are most important here and moving forward in a unified way that is beneficial to all of Union County.
And just so you know, between chemotherapy and, and all the other chores of life, last week, my last two weeks have been spent on Marshall. Trying to help them come up with a sewer solution to, uh, they have potential as well, but, uh, working with Anson County and things like that.
Understood.
So we, and, and on the 20th, at the county commissioner meeting, we're gonna be having our staff come to us report. We've been doing this for the last several meetings, uh, trying to gear towards where we're going and how we pay for it.
Okay, so we would just, we would just like to see that cohesive, cohesiveness spread across.
Anybody else have a question?
If I may.
Yes, you may.
First of all, Chairman Rush, thank you for coming. I hope this isn't the last time. I hope some of the other coaches have come by and, uh, um, system development. Uh, maybe it's something that you can get into now or at some further point. Uh, I'd like to hear a little bit more. I first heard about this a couple of months ago, uh, through Representative Arby. And I was hoping that something to that effect would be expanded. Um, I understand that there are no impact fees, but the, the state of North Carolina is going to need something. Uh, infrastructure is, is the biggest concern. It's, it's a very big concern of ours. Being able to fund all these things in the future, uh, considering the financial way that we're moving. It, it's, it's gonna take not only us, but, uh, other smaller towns a considerable amount of money and funding to grow, however they choose to. Uh, so I would love to have that conversation with you or with our staff and, uh, and try to work on, um, figuring something out. If there are other options that are available to us, I'd love to sit and, and talk about it. And I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Yes, and the system development fees have been wonderful for us to be able to charge that. Um, something, a lot of people in towns, I mean, one thing that we've seen is that we have so many people living here now, where the population's over around 250,000. When COVID hit, the population started shopping at home. And because of the state law about how income taxes are collected, our inc, our sales tax income went from $3 million a year to $6 million a year. They thought it would drop the next year, it did, and went to $6 million again. So they dropped that back and then went up another $6 million. So that, I'm sure you guys are benefiting from some of that as well. So even, even though, even if you don't have commercial. Residences are helping with the sales tax, uh, to help offset some of the taxes. The state, we pay gas taxes. The state, we gotta be careful. Y'all get power bill money, I'm sure, and, you know, have money coming in there. But we're paying our taxes for these roads and we need our roads. And we need to speak with all the loud boys to put in the road infrastructure that we need. And there's no worse place that I've seen it than, and obviously, state and highway and 402.
Absolutely, I, I agree. Uh, one of the things we've been able to accomplish, uh, here is some projects that might not have been accomplished had we not taken initiative. Uh, traffic light up on, uh, 16 is a prime example. While it didn't fall under our jurisdiction, our, our responsibility, we, we took it upon, uh, we took that project on and, uh, we got it accomplished. And I think in the future, a lot of municipalities, and it's something that we're doing, uh, are gonna have to take the initiative and find ways to figure all this out, uh, whether it be commercial, uh, growth, or, you know, anything that, that's gonna affect us. So.
We put in a, we helped with this roundabout on Waxahaw and Marvin Road. Uh, so the county has, has done projects as well to help push and sometimes develop, sometimes develop.
We benefit from that.
Alright. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Commissioner, thanks for.
I'm sorry for taking so long.
It's, it's okay. It's, it's okay. But I think this is a start again of some dialogue that needs to happen. That probably hasn't happened as well in the past, and I do appreciate.
Everybody's got their, kind of their wheelhouse and, and we all do count on each other. And not only do we count on each other, we count on the state and the federal government and, 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 but all these folks here, they elect all of us. So we count on them the most and we have to kind of listen when they're telling us there's a problem. We have to listen and make sure that we understand and try to address those problems as best we can. While they don't sit in all the closed sessions we do, while they don't sit in all the open sessions we do. They, they are concerned about what's going on and the better we can educate the public and each other, uh, I think, uh, we, we got a great county now.
I think it's gonna be important, as you know, I cherish heart port, so we have a lot of dialogue going up between three counties, Union, Meck and Ardell County. So, we have a lot of dialogue going up between three counties, Union, Meck and Ardell County. And one of the discoverables is each one of the municipalities in all those three counties. They don't necessarily talk to each other. And so, we can't plan, and from a transportation planning organization, we can't plan unless we know where they're going. And so, I think it'd be, you know, helpful for all of us here in the county to start to get together and talk about each other's plans, and then also understand each other's restrictions or rules and regulations that we have. Because again, we just had that conversation about your rules and our rules. And so, they seem to be different.
When somebody comes to me and asks me about development anywhere in the county, I say, give it a couple of years. Make sure that we can build what we say we're going to build.
As long as we can stay within the law.
Nobody has to be.
Right. All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that, and, uh, thanks for coming to see us.
Don't mind, I'm gonna leave. I gotta drive thirty minutes that way.
You're okay. Thank you. All right. So, we're going to, now there's nothing on the old business, new business. We're back to Mr. Blair, if you want to come up. And, uh, we are new business, and, uh, we are looking to kind of close the loop on your presentation during the open, or the public hearing session. So, I'll let you have the floor again. I'm hoping that you're not going to repeat all of it.
No, I'm getting, I'm getting right to the point. Let's see. All right. On January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, Planning Board unanimously voted in favor to recommend for approval of the Waxaw Comprehensive Pedestrian Plan by the Board of Commissioners. So, earlier this evening, public hearing was held to review and consider the plan. And our requested action is a motion to adopt the Waxaw Comprehensive Pedestrian Plan as presented.
All right. So, who's going to make that motion, since we have been highly educated on the matter? And we do enjoy all of our family coming to us all the time, not just the PD. So, we love everybody. We love all of our family. So, I'm looking for motion.
Motion to adopt the Waxaw Comprehensive Pedestrian Plan as presented.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. It's unanimous. Blair, thank you for all the hard work that you do for us all the time. I know we like to tease and we visit your office all the time, but thanks for entertaining all of us.
You're always welcome.
All right, thank you. All right, there isn't anything on the closed, um, session tonight. So, we'll go to the town leadership reports. We'll go start off with Town Manager Jeffrey Wells.
Thank you, Mayor. At first I didn't have, have anything, but I do want to share a couple of things. And one of the things I want to share is about, uh, Mr. Blair Israel. And he mentioned, he, uh, produced the first comprehensive plan back in, in twenty twelve. And at that time, he was working for the, uh, the COG, the Council of Governments. And then, when I came to Waxaw, he was, he was still working for the Council of Governments, doing consulting work for the, uh, the town, the regular day-to-day stuff during our, uh, during that time period of the Planning Department's existence. I got here in the town and started moving in the direction that we were. And one of the things that Blair said to me is like, hey, I really like what's going on here. I'd really like to, you know, learn more about working for Waxaw permanently. Here we are.
And here we are.
Yeah.
Much appreciated. Definitely. A great contribution.
Absolutely. Just one of the, the, one of many great team members that we have. And the other thing I'll say about, uh, what you mentioned earlier, Mayor, is, is our team member that we unfortunately lost very recently was Sonny Spawn, public services employee, and just a really good human being, good man. And I really think that, that his name just really says a lot about him, because, you know, he, he brightened up everywhere that he went. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that. Next up, Downtown Director Ashley Nowell. How are you today?
Good.
Welcome back up to the podium. I know it's an unfamiliar place for you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, so I want to talk about several upcoming events, um, that we have going on in downtown. So, um, we have been, we've had a lot of ribbon cuttings recently, which was really exciting. So, we have two more this week. Um, so we have one on Wednesday at Refresh Gift Boutique. So, that's on East North Main. They just moved their location there. So, that'll be on Wednesday at three PM. Then we have one on Friday at Waxaw Downtown Pause, our new pet supply store. That'll be on Friday at three PM as well. We have also scheduled our next Downtown Business Owner Social Hour. And this is just a chance for our business owners, property owners, and then our volunteers and committee and board members, just to get to know each other in more of a casual setting. Um, we have scheduled that for Monday, February twenty-seventh at six PM. And we're doing that at Noma Salon again. And then, we have a historic preservation workshop scheduled for Wednesday, March first. And that'll be at ten thirty at the Waxaw Women's Club. And that's co-hosted by our Historic Preservation Commission and our Downtown Waxaw Committees. And we'll have Brett Sturm there from the State Historic Preservation Office with us. And he's going to talk about, um, alternative materials in historic preservation. For those of you that got to attend his, his, um, his session in September when he was here, he is just a wealth of knowledge. So, we're just really excited to have him. And then we'll get to take him to a few buildings downtown and get his, his advice on some historic preservation projects we're working on. We have our North Carolina Main Street Conference coming up. So, that's March fourteenth through sixteenth in Statesville. We are going to have quite the turnout for Waxaw. So, we've got six staff members that are going from downtown Parks and Rec and the Planning Department. And then we also have six volunteers, um, both on the downtown boards and committees, as well as, um, the Parks and Rec boards and committees and historic preservation. And then, um, during that conference, we will be receiving an award on Wednesday, uh, March fifteenth. The Livery Stables will get an award for best historic rehabilitation. And then, on Thursday, March sixteenth, our Downtown Champion will be recognized as well. Staying with conferences, at the end of March, um, we'll have our National Main Street Conference. Uh, that is in Boston this year. So, Commissioner Simpson and I are going to go represent Waxaw up there. Once we hear back on our accreditation, we, if, if we receive accreditation, we'll actually be recognized during that opening session with accreditation. So, that will be fun. Um, and it's just such a good time to just network with communities all over the country. In Main Street, you hear that we, we like to R and D, except we say we like to rip off and duplicate. And so, it's a great time to get really good ideas from other communities and then kind of twist them and make them fit, um, the community that you're working in. For the Downtown Waxaw Association, the nonprofit that we've been working on, our board applications were due last Friday, and we had just a great number of applications. We have fourteen total applications, um, that we'll be going through. We'll review those applications with the OAB first. We'll schedule interviews with the applicants, and then we'll present a slate of those six community members to you guys in early April. Um, I know Matt is here, and he'll talk a little bit about the TAB grant project, but I did want to, um, mention our kind of communications plan around those downtown pedestrian improvements that we have coming. I send weekly updates to all of our business and building owners in downtown. So, we will have a section in there that's just strictly on the downtown pedestrian improvements, where the construction crew will be that week, what they're working on, and how that progress is going. And that goes out every week on Friday. We'll send another one out on Monday mornings that's solely focused on those businesses surrounding the construction. So, um, their first project will be some of the smaller bits of the TAB grant. And so, our, our emails right now are kind of focused on those businesses just surrounding that, that little area. We've also built this really cool communications campaign, um, and we're, it's called Something Cool Is Coming. So, every time we talk about the downtown pedestrian improvement project, we use that phrase. We want to make sure that we're focusing on this really cool vision that we have for the project at the end. So, we worked with Jenny and got some really good graphics created. So, we have an awesome Something Cool Is Coming logo. And we have posters that we'll have in the businesses, and you can scan a QR code to immediately go to updates, um, about the construction that's happening, as well as sandwich board signage that'll be around town, and, um, some social media graphics. These, these social media graphics that we created, we've also shared with the business owners, along with some sample social posts, so that we can all say the, the same thing and share the same language and be using that, that Something Cool Is Coming phrase. So, we are, we are really excited about it.
I like it. Something cool is coming.
Something cool is coming.
That's great.
I credit Jenny.
Any comments, thoughts? Ashley, thanks again. Thanks for all the good work that you do as well. Everywhere I go, they don't recognize me anymore. They recognize you downtown. So, we know you're there. Thanks. All right, next up, uh, Parks and Recreation. Welcome back. It's been a little bit. Ms. Dina Sabinski.
What we got laying over there? Hello, all. Thanks for, um, letting me come tonight to give you a heads up about what's going on, all in Park and Rec. So, program-wise, we've got, um, youth ballet started back up. Heroes at Harrison Park, um, this week, doing a Valentine's craft. We also have Cupid, Cookies with Cupid is tomorrow at the McDonald House. If you haven't signed up, you still have time. Walking group, yoga, and senior fitness is moving along. We've got great participation in all. So, we're, um, this is a way to get your healthy start of the year, keep you going. So, come play with us on that. Senior Coffee Hour, we're doing canvas painting on the sixteenth. So, that's new interactive activity with our seniors. And then Mixology is coming up on the twentieth. It's another great partnership with one of our businesses. Movie, um, Under the Water Tank is March the tenth. We're watching Angels in the Outfield to help start off with our baseball season going on. And then I want to do is save the date. This is so you can start getting ready, um, one to go play with us on Litter Sweep on April the first, but also Shred Day is happening that day as well. So, you get clean out of your home, and they help us clean up Waxaw. So, two things in one. A couple of updates. The Downtown Park is starting on phase two. Please, no more rain dances. No more. Help me out. We actually had some flooding over the weekend. So, be aware on social. If we get some more rain, that possibly could happen this weekend. We might have to close down some of the trails again, uh, just because of Twelve Mile Creek is not being friendly with us right now. So, just be aware of that and be careful. Remember, your car's not, it's a floating device, so don't go through water. And then, where the, Michael did a great promo about the year of the trail. New activities are starting to come out. So, we're actually going to do a scavenger hunt on a trail, and you can find a prize, a treasure. So, look forward for that coming out. Any questions?
I think that's going to be a lot of fun, as long as you don't place them before the rain.
Yes. No more rain.
All right. Appreciate that. We certainly appreciate everything you guys do. Any thoughts, comments? All right. Thanks, Ms. Dina. Appreciate that. Next up, Public Service Director Todd Matthews. I guess you're going to have to go through the maze again, too. Welcome. Good, good to see you.
We winded up finishing up our leaf season this year. Last year, we did two hundred and twenty-three loads. This year, we did two hundred and fifty-seven plus. Comes up to about sixty-eight hundred yards of leaves.
Wow.
Biggest one we've ever done. The handrails downtown are ninety percent complete. We got two toilets in the fire hydrant. You know, back there got me so.
Busted.
Working on a five-year tree plan. Work on all the trees in the neighborhood. We did one count at Mill Bridge. It is three thousand, three hundred and seventy-six trees. And we figured Folladale's probably got another four hundred. Kirsons probably don't have about that same amount. So, we're trying to get a five-year plan, break up the town, so we can turn them every year. Working with Jeff, some waste parole on the trash and the trash ordinance. Finally got the hose dug, Lindsay Meadows for the crossing norms. We're going to start working on those. And we started grading the park for the sidewalks. And, uh, we collected data for the streets and sidewalk repairs for this year. As you know, y'all been talking about Sonny, we lost him. And his boy posted something on Facebook. He said, "I'll never forget the kindness Waxaw has shown me. It's truly grateful that he worked with such a great group of people." She said, "I can't say enough," and that's true. I looked up at his funeral Friday and seeing everybody from Waxaw there, do the ones that couldn't be there because they had obligations. It was just, it was lifting. I've been here twenty-one years, and I mean, this is just, it's crazy. We're like one big family now. It's great. Any questions?
Questions, thoughts? And we are, we keep saying that, uh, that we are, but I, I don't know. I hear it from you guys, uh, a lot, and certainly at, uh, Sonny's celebration on Friday. But we have really become a close-knit family. And it really shows. It shows in the enthusiasm, the way we all work together, uh, have questions. We all have each other's back. So, your crew is a very, very big part of that. And it was actually nice to see all of them. I didn't recognize some of them without their caps on, so.
Oh, I know. I didn't notice some of them was kind of, because two of them, I've never seen them without a hat. Sonny was not only a good person, he was like a brother to everybody, like a dad to some of them. And a great cook. Y'all heard, he fed us every Friday morning.
Every Friday morning, he cooked for you.
And I'm talking bacon, eggs, liver, mites, bologna, grits. The whole works. Every Friday morning.
I want to ask who's got the duty now.
I told Ryan, he had to do it.
Well, he is certainly going to be missed. But again, this is like anything else, when those changes in life happen, we go on. We are a family. We support each other. And your guys do a great job.
Getting easier, yeah.
It is, so. Thank you. Any thoughts? Great. Thanks, Todd. Appreciate that. All right. Next up, Melody Schuler, who is the Assistant to the Town Manager. You make your way through that maze like everybody else has this evening. He's got the gait arm over there.
Good evening. Thank you. So, I echo Todd's sentiments that, you know, we are very much a family here, and we've come a really long way. And I really appreciate everything, all the leadership the board has provided, the manager for the town, because it trickles down to staff and the communication and the trust that has been, um, just overwhelming, is really made a difference in the whole organization. And I've seen a complete culture flip in the last three years. So, that's quite the accomplishment. So, thank you. I am here on behalf of the grants team. I have great news. But before I do, I want to share with you, uh, the process that we go through as a team. So, on a monthly basis, a group of us get together to review the grants that are coming available to determine whether or not, um, we have the resources in place to be able to apply for these grants. And once we determine that we can go for it, we assign those specific tasks to those team members who are most qualified to take care of it. So, specific questions or documents. And so, um, once we go for it, uh, and basically, uh, if it requires a match or whatever, then we come to the board for your support. And so, you witnessed that, uh, back in December. We came to you for support for the, um, NC DOT Paved Trails and Sidewalk feasibility study. Staff pulled together the application and submitted it January ninth. And then, um, last week, we were, uh, received the announcement that we received that applicant, or that grant. And, uh, so that is for the Twelve Mile Creek Greenway feasibility study. So, very excited about the possibility of what doors that will open up for completing that project in the future. I do want to recognize those team members who had a part in this grant. And hopefully, I did not miss anybody, but Matt Hubert, Lisa Thompson, Dina Sabinski, Blair Israel, Madison Miller, Susan Lee, and Linda Farnham. Dina Sabinski, Blair Israel, Madison Miller, Susan Lee, and Linda Fornham. So, that is my report. Any questions?
Go get some more grants.
We're working on it. Lots of research going on on our end, but really enjoy it. Thank you.
And thank you. And I'm, I'm, I'm actually seeing that you're enjoying your new role as well. So.
Yes, I am.
Thank you for that. I can see it in your face. So, thank you for taking on that role and certainly giving assistance to the manager. And of course, you've got such a great connect with everybody here in the organization. You've been here long enough. So, we appreciate you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the opportunity.
All right. Any, uh, other comments around the horn here? All right, Melody. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. All right, we're down for the Board of Commissioners. Any comments? I know it's, uh, getting a little late on one of our longer meetings, but, uh, any comments, thoughts, whatever, for the good of the group? All right. Without that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Great. Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and sitting through everybody's, uh, comments, thoughts, questions, all that stuff. That's what we are all about. We do communicate. So, thank you.